We'll start with an invocation. We have Jean Shelburne with us to do that today. Thank you, Jean, for being here.
For over half a century, Lord, you've been hearing the prayers that I've prayed in these meetings for our city leaders. Thank you for hearing those petitions for you to guide and watch over those who often face hard decisions during these hours. You know, Lord, that 50 years ago, our city's entire annual budget was less than some of the single items on today's agenda. Costs just keep going up, but you've made sure that we always have enough. Thank you for giving us so many years of prosperity. Continue, dear Lord, to bless our town with adequate funds and grant our elected leaders the wisdom to use those dollars wisely to maintain a city that our grandchildren can be proud of. Guide all of us today in this meeting, Lord. Keep our thoughts clear, our attitudes gracious, our tongues under control, so that this will be an hour all of us can feel good about. We pray in the name of your son who always said the right thing. Amen.
Amen.
Could you join us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one proclamation today, and it's a very fun one. If you're here with the Parks and Rec Department and want to join us up front, we would invite you to do that. All by yourself?
Yep.
Michael Keshuba?
Okay.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Amarillo, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. Whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas Parks and Rec is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, so now there we four, the mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month, and we urge all citizens to enjoy the Amarillo Park System and participate in our many programs, activities, and special events given under our hands and seal of office this 26th date of July 2022. I am truly moved, just reading through all of that, Michael, what you guys do in touching our community through the Parks and Rec Department, and every time I leave a meeting with someone from Parks and Rec, I have more energy because I'm thinking, wow, y'all are working on important things, things that really impact our community, and not just our kids and our seniors and our pets, but yes, our kids and our seniors and our pets. So come, step on up here. We appreciate everything that you and your team do to make our city a wonderful place, especially the parks that we have in our city, but thank you for increasing the quality of our lives, which your team does so well. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything they want to add to that?
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah. Come, stand in the middle next to Howard. He doesn't buy my promise.
(laughing)
The next item on the agenda is public address, so I will hand that to our moderator, Stephanie Coggins.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two citizens signed up to share today for public address. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're very glad that you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll hear a warning beep, letting you know that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We ask that you stay within the three minutes allotted. Speakers are asked to limit your comments to items on our posted agenda today. We also have several public hearings, so if you're here to speak on an item that has a public hearing, we would kindly request that you speak either during public address or during the public hearing for that item, but not both. Doing so will help us keep accurate records. It's your decision when you would like to speak. When you come to the microphone, please state your name, whether or not you live in Amarillo City Limits, and please state the item that you are speaking on, for, or against. First today, we'll have Mr. Allen Abraham, and after Allen will be Ms. Sherri Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Council, Mayor, speaking on behalf in favor of, in support of the Recognized Neighborhood Association. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, I'm a citizen of this fine city. What was the other thing I was supposed to tell you?
You covered your bases, Mr. Abraham.
Item E, non-consent agenda item, Recognized Neighborhood Associations. I speak in favor, Council, of you establishing this protocol as a public duty. By that I mean protecting taxpayer dollars while providing structure to the city's investment in the four neighborhood plan areas using designated channels. I wish to encourage that continued investment in those neighborhoods. The planning department has to have some organizational criteria in order to work in these designated, yet amorphous, neighborhoods. In addition to guaranteeing them a who's who among each neighborhood's leadership roster, there can also be departmental follow-through and accountability for the hours spent and the dollars allocated. That is structure, transparency, accountability, tangible progress. Recognized associations is a good idea that will keep on giving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Next, Ms. Ferguson, we welcome you up.
Sherri Ferguson, yes, I live in the city limits, and I am here on behalf of San Jacinto Neighborhood Association. And Allen took care of all technical stuff. I agree, we agree, and we're good to go, but thank you all for serving. We appreciate the job you all do. It's sometimes very thankless. We appreciate the atmosphere that has been changed over the last several years within the city and the departments. It has made it a lot of fun to work with them, and we enjoy it very much. San Jacinto, when we first started, we started with Andrew and Emily as planners. Look where they are now. Change happens. All we're doing is working to improve the circumstances in the older neighborhoods, which are the beginning of Amarillo. This is where we started, and we are the heart of the city, no matter what. San Jacinto has touched almost everybody that is in Amarillo in one way or another, growing up, all of that. So we are very much in favor of the RNAs, and we appreciate the Neighborhood Planning Department very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson, and that concludes public address.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to Agenda Item 1A, is there anything in your packet, Council, that you needed further clarification on before we dive into the rest of the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Item 1B is updates from council members serving on outside boards and commissions, and the first item is beautification of public arts. Dr. Sauer is caught up on something, an unexpected delay today, so we'll come back around to him for that one and the second one also. Let's go ahead and move down to Item 3, which is the Amarillo Local Government Corporation.
Mayor, we-
It says code, but it means corporation.
Well, we're gonna need to push that to August 2nd. I should have told you that before the meeting. Because there is a state local government code, it might not be, it is more than just-
It doesn't look like a type, okay.
It's more than a scrutiny reserve, so we will present an update on the local government corporation at the August 2nd meeting.
Okay, let's-
This week. I apologize for that.
The update on the Amarillo Metropolitan Planning Organization. Frida, do you want me to go first, or?
No, that's your turn.
Okay. We had a meeting this week, and actually, I guess it was just last week.
Last Thursday.
Thursday, yes, thank you. Had a report from the Ports to Plains I-27 Corridor Chairman, John Osborne, and good information, good progress coming on that project. He had some just, it's really speculation still on what might be the timing for development, and you guys have all seen the map for how that moves from Laredo up to the Colorado border. So that was a good update. We also had some conversation from the policy board about the hike and bike plan that the city passed a year and a half, two years ago, and how that gets incorporated into Loop 335. Many parts of the loop, several of those segments, at least two of them, had already been designed and were in the process of being let out when we passed that hike and bike plan, and so it does not have separate bike, it doesn't have a separate lane from traffic for hike and bike. And so we had conversation just about how can we come back around and create that, because I do think as a city, we want to be bikable, from an exercise and outdoor activity point of view. You see people, joggers and bikers, using the Saucy Trail a lot, and so we just had good conversation around that. To do that, we would have to design another project, and we would have to use a different category of dollars to pay for that. It's too late to add it into those projects. I asked Howard, he's giving me the look like, are you sure? Yeah, I know, and it's fine. I want you to keep asking, too. So that will be an ongoing process, but at least from the board level, it was discussed what it would look like future years, and they were able to hear, the TAC committee was able to hear, that that is a priority, that those walking and biking lanes be considered going forward. Anything you want to add on that, Frida?
No, I really don't have anything else to add. I mean, those were kind of the major areas that we talked about.
Jared, anything to add? Jared sits on that committee with us also.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, I think you got it.
Okay. Then we'll move on. Do y'all have any questions about that? Howard Cole?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on then, and let's do Item 1C, and while Floyd's coming to the podium, I'll tell you guys, just housekeeping-wise, we do have a press conference scheduled for 2:00 with regard to Item 3I, and so we will move to that item on the agenda somewhere around 1:45, and if we need to have an executive session on that agenda item, we can, but just wanted everybody to be aware, we're gonna do a little bit of jumping around today on the agenda. Okay, Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to give you an update on the drought contingency plan. As you were aware, last Friday, we hit the triggers for stage one, and so that press release went out. You've got copies of that, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to ask questions and follow up, and I wanted to give you some details as to where we were at on water production. So the drought contingency plan is a document prepared through resolution that council updates every five years that has specific criteria within it that dictates how we move forward under high demand related to water production. So this graph here shows the orange bars or the red bars going up are the daily production numbers in millions of gallons. You can see that over on the left side. I've got a couple of graphs that we get, well, I'll talk some data, and then we can just talk questions and answers. But you'll see that our demand is much higher than normal due to the hot, dry weather, and we don't foresee an end to that hot, dry weather. Hopefully, the forecasters are right, and later this week, we see some relief. But our typical average is about 70 million gallons a day, maybe a little under, on July, and you can see that consistently through July, we have exceeded that amount significantly and pushing upwards in the 80 millions and closer to the 90 million mark. Our all-time high ever on a production day is 92 million. So this is, the drought contingency plan has plans for emergency breakdowns, long-term water demand, and that's where we're at. We're not in something that's broken. We're in a demand, a long-term dry period, where demands are just going extremely high compared to normal. Our system is very robust. We're very able to provide the water. We have water resources in reserve, and I'll show you some of that here in a minute, so that I want you to have confidence that our water system's in very good shape. But you see the last three bars, we announced that on Friday, and I want to brag on our community. If you look at what our community was able to accomplish with a press release, there it is. We have a very knowledgeable community that's very receptive to our needs and their needs as water supply and a long-term water supply, and you can see that that demand dropped off significantly with that effort, and so I have to applaud the community on their understanding of water and how it's used. We ask for voluntary, and stage one is completely voluntary, and within the plan, it talks about the watering schedule, three days. We had the questions, can I water less? Obviously, yes, you can water less. This is voluntary, and we're asking our residents to stick to water and plan. That way, odd even addresses water on different nights, and it evens out that demand, and our system can operate in a much more efficient manner. But that breakdown wasn't the cause of this. The immediate high demand going over the 75 million percent line, that blue line at the top, that wasn't what caused trigger. The trigger that's in this is our reservoir, okay? So there's two different triggers that would trigger stage one. That's 70% of available water production for five consecutive days. Back on my previous slide, that's that blue line across the top. You'd have to exceed that line or close to that line for five consecutive days. That did not trigger this. So the next trigger would be ongoing high demand results of drawdown of the raw water reservoir to 60% capacity. That is the trigger that put us into stage one. So how do you understand that a little better? Here is the graph of the raw water reservoir. Remember, we have a reservoir in front of our water treatment plant that has 500 million gallons in it, okay? That 500 million gallons, that reservoir was designed, and many of you have toured it, it was designed exactly for this purpose. If you look at this graph back into April, you see where we were able to raise the reservoir with our supplies, and then gradually with the hot, dry weather, you saw that reservoir level being drawn down. That is exactly what that reservoir was designed to do for us long-term. You look at that timeframe, we're at 60% over that three-month period. At that same drawdown, you saw that we're able to level out even a week or so into this last week or so. But what I put on this graph was our best projected under the orange line in the middle. That is what we expect to go forward, that we flattened out, we're able to manage this demand in relation to our water supply and keep that reservoir at that level, meaning for that time period, we would stay probably in stage one. The yellow line is the best-case scenario, and we have, with that reduced demand that I showed you on the other slide, over a few days, we are between the orange line and the yellow line in this last three days, and we hope to continue that, and we see that positive. But the yellow line, what we would anticipate would be the best-case scenario going forward. It's a very positive outlook. Hopefully, it'll rain, and we can get to there or exceed that. But the bottom line is what we project is the worst-case scenario under our current demands. You notice that we don't get to 50% on that bottom worst-case scenario. We don't anticipate going to stage two. This is a very gradual demand. It's due to the long, hot, dry summer, so we don't anticipate that we will go to further stages, but we do ask that our residents continue to look at those conservation efforts, alternative, the watering schedules, and any other conservation tool that they have available. We also realize that those residents have investments in their landscape, and the business have investment in their landscape, and we want to work with them to make sure that that investment is protected. It's challenging when it's this hot and dry, but that's where we're at. The other stages, you know, it triggers at 50, 40, and 30%. You can see that when we get into September, we can really move that needle back up to filling this reservoir, and so that's how it was built. It's doing exactly what it was designed to do, and we didn't have to invest in huge pump stations and huge lines that cost millions and millions of dollars because we have that reservoir to deal with this problem. So that's where we're at. I'd be glad to entertain any questions or get you any additional information you'd like to have.
Can you go back to the first graph you had? Go back to, what are those months? Three, four, and five?
Those are, the bottom line is days in July.
Okay. Then days, three, four, and five?
Yes.
It looks very similar to what we have.
My guess is there's a rain event.
There's a what?
A rain event.
Okay.
But we also had a holiday there, so people may have been doing other things besides watering their yard.
We didn't have that drop like we did this year.
Right. So there's a lot of information on here. The one, the orange line at the top is the high temperature for the day, so you can see the relationship between water demand and high temperature. So there's a lot of information that we look at, and this is how we kind of track it, but you can also see the last five days' average. For up and Friday, when we went in, the average for July was above 80, and now you see the last five days is 72. So again, I have to brag on the community. They're doing outstanding.
Floyd, can you just quickly run down what we're asking citizens to do in this stage one?
Sure. To recap that, yes. Voluntary odd-even watering days, where odd addresses, if your address ends in an odd number, you water on Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday, hopefully after 10:00 p.m. before 6:00 a.m., okay? Even addresses on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, same thing, hopefully after 10:00 p.m. and before 6:00 a.m. And then any other voluntary water conservation thing that they have that's specific to them, if they would implement it. It's just a matter of kind of eliminating that peak demand day, just getting it average. That's the goal. The goal in the plan stated is to drop 5%. That drop in three days is more than 5%. We've accomplished the goal that's stated in the plan so far. Now, we've got some hot days coming. Hopefully, we get a rain coming and keep it up, but those are what we're asking, voluntary efforts, and we hopefully would see that the rest of the summer until we get to a point where we're out of stage one, when that reservoir is above that 60% for more than five days.
It's gonna rain this week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That will fix a lot of problems. Any other questions?
Thank you, Floyd.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, anything to update, I'm sorry, anything to request for a future agenda item or a report from staff? Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Anything there, Council, you want to take off for questions or further discussion? Hearing nothing. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the consent agenda with the revised minutes for Item 2A as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 4-0 vote. Moving on to Agenda Item 3A, a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 7997. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. This is a economic development ordinance. Got Kevin Carter, President and CEO of PEDC Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. Kevin, bring it to us.
Hi, Council.
Hi.
Good to see y'all back up on the podium. Frida's a little bit out of place over here, though.
Yeah, and it's gonna be the Kevin Carter Show today.
It's gonna be a great day. So this is ordinance number 7997. It's consideration of reinvestment zone 19. This is a public hearing and the first reading of an ordinance to consider designating certain areas of the city as a reinvestment zone for commercial and industrial tax abatement. This zone is approximately 20.7 acres, and it's in the vicinity of South Georgia Street and Farmers Road, as you can see there in the green. That's our South Georgia Business Park. For reference, on the south side is Casique, the new cheese plant, that will be online sometime either late in December or early January, and then affiliated foods there to the east. And then affiliated foods there to the east. Before council may consider a new zone, it must be preceded by a public hearing within seven days of written notice to the hearing, and that has all been completed, and thank you, Andrew, for always handling that. But designating a reinvestment zone is a step in the property tax abatement process under chapter three twelve of the Texas Tax Code. Local governments often use tax abatements to attract new industry and commercial enterprises and encourage the retention and development of existing businesses. So designation of this area as a reinvestment zone is required before the city council has the ability to offer a tax abatement. We're looking at a manufacturing facility to be located in this area. The second reading will be next Tuesday, along with the location incentive agreement for that business.
Any questions for Kevin about this part of the project, council? Okay. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on agenda item three A related to ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-seven. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item will have three minutes to do so. So anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item three A.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-seven, designating a zone of approximately twenty-point-seventy acres in the vicinity of South Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue as reinvestment zone number nineteen for commercial and industrial tax abatement.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-seven. Any further questions or discussion on that motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a four oh vote. Item three B. Kevin?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, council, this is another reinvestment zone. This is reinvestment zone number twenty. This is a public hearing and the first reading of an ordinance to consider designating a certain area of the city as reinvestment zone number twenty for commercial and industrial tax abatement. The zone is approximately thirty acres in the vicinity of Airport Boulevard and Southeast Third Avenue. You can see that is right there between Bell Helicopter and those old grain elevators there to the southwest, right on the airport apron. So it's gonna be to the west of Airport Boulevard. This thirty acres proposed for reinvestment zone number nineteen is located at Airport Boulevard in Southeast Third Avenue. The reason for this, creation of this zone is also to provide space for a manufacturing facility.
Council, questions for Kevin? Yeah? No? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, mayor.
At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item three B, which is ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-eight. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may have three minutes to do so at this time. So anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on item three B and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-eight, designating a zone of approximately thirty acres in the vicinity of Airport Boulevard and Southwest Third Avenue as reinvestment zone number twenty for commercial and industrial tax abatement.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-eight. Are there any questions or discussions about that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with the four oh vote. Item three C is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-nine. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, mayor, we have a rezoning. It says Brady Kendrick on there, but Brady couldn't be here today. So we have Chris Valverde, Director of Planning, to bring the item. Chris?
Mayor, council, good afternoon. Ordinance seventy-nine ninety-nine is to consider the rezoning of a eight-point-two-nine acre tract of land in section one ninety-one, block two, A B and M survey. It's located in Potter County, and it's to change from agricultural district to residential district three. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning in order to develop the land with single-family detached homes, which is the next phase of the Vineyard subdivision. Residential district three allows for single-family detached homes only on lots that are a minimum of five thousand square feet in size. Although the proposed density is higher than that recommended by the Future Land Use Map, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that since the area development and zoning patterns have changed to a more dense residential type of development, that the applicant's requested zoning designation is appropriate. It is worth noting that this particular rezoning request complies with the Vineyard's preliminary plan, and as such, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as presented. We did send notices out to everybody within two hundred feet. We have not received any calls opposed to this particular request. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions, council?
I was just curious, how many homes?
I believe there are seventy-five, around that number, for this particular phase here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chris. At this time, we will open a public hearing on item three C, ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-nine. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item, you may have three minutes to do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-nine, rezoning an eight-point-two-nine acre tract, tract of unplatted land in section one ninety-one, block two, A B and M survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from agricultural district to residential district three in the vicinity of West Hastings Avenue and Broadway Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve ordinance number seventy-nine ninety-nine. Any questions or discussions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes with the four oh vote. Item three D is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number eight thousand. Chris?
Council, ordinance eight thousand is to consider the rezoning of lots ten and eleven, block eleven, Lawrence Park Edition, unit number four, in section two-twenty-seven, block two, A B and M survey, Potter and Randall County. It's to change from office district two to neighborhood service district. A change in zoning is being requested in order to utilize the existing building for office and storage uses that support the applicant's retail store, liquor store operations in Amarillo. Because alcoholic beverages for off-premise sales will be stored on the site, and the fact that current zoning does not allow for off-premise alcohol sales, a zoning district that would allow such is needed and is the primary reason for this particular request. Given the location and surrounding zoning and development patterns, Neighborhood Service District is a district, in the Planning Commission's opinion, that establishes an appropriate transitional zoning district from the general retail zoning to the north and future retail zoning to the west, to all the residential areas that do surround this particular tract. Additionally, the proposed zoning district would allow for neighborhood services that could provide uses that serve the immediate area should the applicant's existing operations cease in that particular building. Notices were sent out to everybody within two hundred feet. We did not receive any calls against this particular item. Taking all this into account, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the applicant's request would not be out of character with the area, nor would it present any negative impact should it be approved. As such, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval as presented.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Okay. At this time, we have a public hearing on item three D, which is ordinance eight thousand. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item, you may have three minutes to do so. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item three D.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number eight thousand, rezoning lots ten and eleven, block eleven, Lawrence Park Edition, unit number four, in addition to the city of Amarillo in section two-two-seven, block two, A B and M survey, Potter County and Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from office district two to Neighborhood Service District in the vicinity of Southwest Twenty-Eighth Avenue and Paramount Boulevard.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number eight thousand. Any questions or further discussion on that motion?
Yes, mayor. Just a point of clarification here. I think my agenda says eight thousand one. Is that, is that the right ordinance number?
I think we're on D still, is that right? Did I get off? That's sure possible.
Oh.
This is eight thousand.
Eight thousand, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
This is why we clarify. I'm glad to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, so we are on ordinance number eight thousand. So the motion is with regard to ordinance number eight thousand, is that correct, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, it is.
Correct. Okay, good, thank you for confirming that. Okay, with that, let's vote on that motion. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with the four oh vote. Mr. City Manager, I'm just watching our time with regard to our press conference at two o'clock. Is this item E? I think it's a pretty quick one, and we could do it and, I think, reach a good breaking point before we jump down to item I.
It should be, it's very straightforward. It has had a lot of input from the public, from all of our neighborhood plan groups, and Emily Kohler can be very brief. Emily, can you tell us, can you get this done in five minutes? So to present the item, we have Assistant Director of Planning, Emily Kohler.
Hint, hint, no pressure there.
You heard lots of compliments from our two commenters on our staff. They're talking specifically about Emily, I'm guessing. Emily's not gonna say, oh yeah, they're talking about me. But I'm pretty sure they're talking about Emily, so.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I will try to go quickly. I'm glad we had some speakers here to speak in support of this item. This is a new program. We've actually been working on it for a couple of years. But it's intended to formalize the ongoing partnership between the city and the neighborhoods with adopted plans. And as you know, those are voluntary organizations. We ask a lot of them, they ask a lot of us, and we've done all this without any kind of written process or agreement. So that's really what this is for. It includes a list of eligibility criteria that the neighborhood associations need to meet. They just ensure, the criteria just ensures that they're running active, transparent, membership-based organizations that fairly represent their neighborhood boundary. And then in turn, the city recognizes their efforts and commits to ongoing assistance for projects and working to direct financial resources to the plans. And so this is the, the list of the eligibility criteria. It is very straightforward. I don't think I need to go through all of this. But, you know, a minimum number of board members that represents the different property owners, business owners, residents. They have to have membership. They have to run a membership program and welcome anyone to be a member as part of their organization. They have to file as a nonprofit corporation, just become a legal-recognized entity with the Texas Secretary of State. And they have to establish and maintain an active five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit status. Those, I think, are the major ones. The rest of these address the, the meetings, how often they're meeting, that they're posting those, actively communicating when and where meetings are. And then they have to show progress towards projects in the neighborhood plan. And that's done when that says follow a strategic plan of work. That isn't the neighborhood plan, that's an annual action plan that they have to file and, and show that they are actively engaged in projects that are improving these neighborhoods. So, neighborhoods, if they represent their purpose as implementation of the plan, then they have to meet this criteria. They will have to become recognized. There's no fee, they're gonna file with us, and if they meet the criteria, then we're gonna come back to you and present a resolution. And that's the official recognition process. And then they will renew annually and just demonstrate that they're continuing to meet those requirements. PIDs and HOAs are not eligible right now, and multiple organizations cannot be recognized within the same boundary at the same time. And then the ordinance also just includes ongoing duties and responsibilities for both the city and the planning department and working with the neighborhoods, and then things that they will need to do as far as like sending us meeting minutes and the way that they submit projects to us. And that's all I have. I don't know how long that was, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Councilmember Stanley?
So do we have a, a process in place? Like, if we have a neighborhood that already has multiple neighborhood associations or things like that, in selecting, or, or is it just first come, first served?
Well, it, it is. I mean, we have active associations that already meet these requirements. We've been working with the neighborhood associations, Vario, North Heights, and San Jacinto. And they're, they've submitted letters of support, and they're like ready to file. There are, there is a, a procedure in here if multiple organizations are interested. It has additional criteria on what we would review, say, if to file at the same time.
Okay. And then the other associations, organizations can remain intact and function. They just wouldn't be recognized as the neighborhood association in anything that would be put out from the city?
That's correct. And if a, a current recognized neighborhood association in the ordinance talks about them becoming non-compliant, so if they don't, they fail to meet the criteria, they go into like a non-compliant status, and other associations then could file to become recognized if the existing one is in that non-compliant.
Okay. And then in the non-compliant status, you're given certain months or, you know, a, a warning of, hey, this is, this is lacking, we need this paperwork, and then they can come into compliance and retain that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's all my questions, thank you.
And I think to receive funding, should the city have funding available to neighborhood plans? They, they would need to be an RNA. But that just gives further transparency and accountability, use those bureaucratic words, but... Some process to, what we've been doing more organically is now, looks like it's, it's really working and making a difference in these neighborhoods. We would like to put some process around it to kind of permanize it of sorts.
Right. Like, the ARPA funding is a good example. Like, if, if we had two RNAs and the others were not meeting the criteria, then that would be justification to, to not award that funding if they're not meeting the criteria.
Okay, any other questions? Emily, we really do appreciate the work that you've done with our neighborhood plans. I do, I know that a lot of what happens in the city belongs to the team, and you have a great team. Andrew, you manage a great team. But your personal passion and diligence to helping these neighborhoods is, it's very obvious to us. And, and we really do appreciate the effort that you put into it. It's changing our city.
Thank you.
So, thank you, yeah. Okay. With that, do we have a motion with regard to item three E?
Yes, mayor, we do. I move to adopt ordinance number eight-zero-zero-one, amending the Amarillo Municipal Code Title Four, Building Codes Development and Zoning by adding chapter four-dash-twelve regarding the city's recognized neighborhood association program.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number eight thousand and one. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a four-one vote. We're gonna move down to item three I, which is consideration of a purchase of groundwater rights. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, this has been discussed at, at length. We, we can go into executive session. It is posted for such, and, and we can also do it even if it wasn't posted. But we can go into executive session if, if y'all need to. Or we can, can go ahead and have a presentation from Floyd Hartman, and y'all can answer, ask any questions you have of Floyd, and then take whatever action you choose.
Council, what I'd like to do is hear Floyd's presentation. And if at the end of that, you feel like you need further information or we need to ask questions, all I need really, I'll give you a chance just to say, let's go into exec. Otherwise, we could take a motion at this time. So Floyd, if you don't mind?
Thank you, mayor and council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here on this topic today. This is a, this is one of the unique agenda items in a career. And for y'all, it is a very special agenda item. But I want to start out with the introduction of Travis and Kylie Chester. They're sitting back here, the owners, prospective owners that are... They're sitting back here, the owners, prospective owners that are negotiating the contract with us. So they're here too. What this item is, is your approval. We're asking, staff is asking your approval to approve a contract for a purchase of water rights in Roberts County up to $29,565. That's based on a $1,875 per acre value for up to 15,768 acres. We had to write this agenda item Friday, understanding that the survey wasn't done and complete. We're still not completely done with the survey. We anticipate it to be slightly under that number, but we did a conservative number. That's as high as it will possibly be. But we anticipate it to be 15,300 acres at this point. But here on the map that you see up on the screen, the shaded areas, the shaded green is the existing Cremaux water rights closely resembling it. There's some pieces of it that are different than that map. The shaded purple is the city of Amarillo-owned water rights in Roberts County. The shaded tan area is the city water rights currently owned in Occultree County. That's the county line up there. So what you see is, is the highlighted areas in the dark blue boundary is the area that we're talking about. It totals approximately 15,300 acres, like I said. The water thickness in there is well above a 300-foot thickness average. It is very good, solid water rights in the Texas Panhandle. It's some of the premier water rights. You're really not going to find 15,000 acres plus with this many, with this much water under it. That's confirmed through actual measurements of wells that are out there, data available through the state water planning, that's data available through the water district, and then data that we've collected adjacent to that in other previous water purchases. So there's many ways to confirm this water, so it's a very, in my professional opinion, it's a very solid purchase. You'll see it's in two parcels, the northeast, and the highway that separates those two parcels is Highway 70 going north out of Pampa, to give you some reference. And the very north edge of that is the Canadian River of that east parcel. So it's actually very close to the Canadian River, north of Pampa, on Highway 70, up toward the northern end of Roberts County. We have proposed in the contract with them pretty much the standard surface use agreement that we have from previous agreements that surround that property. Everything's pretty standard. There's not really any major differences in there. If you wanted all those details, I can get it. I think that's an executive session item, because if you wanted to change that, so... But I will tell you that I reviewed that contract. It's very standard compared to the adjacent Cremaux rights and some of our adjacent rights, so surface damages, easement cost, and all of those in the future. As, this is water for the future. It is not water that we would develop immediately. In our water plan, the purple is, in our master water plan, it is projected that we would develop that in 2065. I will tell you, it will take the exact same infrastructure that it takes to develop that that would transport this water. So there is a huge benefit to the city owning these water rights adjacent to water rights that are planned to be developed in 2065. So I fail to find any negatives. This is a once-in-a-career thing for me to bring forward to you. I'm proud to be here. I will stop there, and I will answer any questions that you have. Hopefully, we can do it out here and not have to do it in executive session. Are there questions?
Questions? Councilmember Stanley?
Yeah, and I think my questions are fine out here, but if I have something that I shouldn't, we can look at it differently. So in the way of where this sits, it's situated geographically in our other water rights. Can you speak a little bit on preservation of if we didn't buy this, what the drawdown rate might be on other water that we have rights to?
Okay. Good question. This would add inventory of our total inventory of water rights, a little over eight percent in some of our total inventory of water rights. So you hit the nail on the head on operational practices. That is not to keep our production demands centered in one location, but to spread that footprint of that production out over time. So remember, in Carson County, we have 62,000 acres permitted. We pump about 25,000 acre feet. When we drill a new well, we reach out. So this will provide that opportunity and maintain that and minimize the individual drawdown of a local area. We had a well filled to the southwest. That was the case through the nineteen, from the 1920s all the way through to the 1960s and 70s, that the production was very concentrated, and that offer drew down tremendously. So this is a tremendous asset for that tool to make us available others. That southwest block has the capability of permitting 37 million gallons a year under the current permitting rules. So it gives you the ability to expand, and so it gives flexibility. If we grow faster, if we need, you know, ADC keeps doing what they're doing, and we have this fantastic economic growth, this water helps do that.
So that's, a lot of times we speak in the way of like 200 years of water rights or reserves and whatnot. Is there any other formulation that would help us in understanding maybe the full impact of this? Because I agree with you, it's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I'm curious if there's another way for you to equate it. You know, we have a 200,000 population here. If, you know, if we grew by 50,000 people, how much impact would that have over, say, 10 years in what our wellfields can still produce?
Okay, I'm trying to think of a way, a parameter to frame that.
Just explain it like a city boy like me can understand.
Where existing, we have 200 years. This makes our supply easily in the neighborhood of 220 years in that neighborhood with the growth that we've seen and expect included in that time period. So just for example, the 37 million that is available in that one tract, that exceeds our winter time average per day. So it's, you're almost able to provide another city the same size of water for a winter time use. Does that give a parameter of what, how much water is there?
This, another way to look at it is this piece of water represents a little over 30 years, I think, all by itself, if we turned off all the other water sources. Now we'd have to develop it, you know, six years from now, or 2060, after 2060.
So it's, you know, you could double the size of the city and develop that one and maintain the winter supply. So it's a huge amount of water.
That's a good example. I appreciate that. Thank you, Floyd.
Other questions?
No, I just have a statement. Mr. Hartman, I just want to say I appreciate you and the staff in working very diligent on this particular project and the opportunity for us to purchase future water. And this is a great opportunity for us to leave a legacy for our city and to know that we will be secure in water as the forefathers before us have done. So I think this is, this is great and this is exciting.
I want to turn that back around. I want to thank you and the council and the mayor for the confidence in me to do this.
Mayor, I wanted to point out on, to piggyback on what Councilmember, Mayor Protem Powell said and what Floyd just said, everyone is probably aware, but I wanted to reiterate, Floyd is probably the foremost recognized expert in groundwater, surface water, everything else from a municipal standpoint in the Panhandle of Texas. He's recognized at the state level. So his expertise has been a big part of this, and, you know, willing partners and great partners that reached out to us too. That's a big part, we can't do without that. But from a city's standpoint, we can't do things like this without people like Floyd. And he's got a good team underneath him that's, or working with him, that he's training up to be able to do this going forward too.
Absolutely agree. Floyd's leadership and our team is not often displayed, but yet it is used every single day. When you flush, when you turn the faucet, Floyd and his team are on display, and Floyd's leadership is vital to our organization. And I want to touch for just a minute on, yes, you never know when an opportunity like this is going to come, but you have to be ready to take it when it does show up. And that's sort of what happened here. This has moved quickly. But Floyd, talk a little bit about the funding and how you and your team, Jared, how your leadership and how our finance team has this ready to go. How are we going to pay for this? And just give us a quick summary on that.
Sure. So you're probably aware of that we had, the city of Amarillo, a decade, a little over decade, sold a Dallin and Hartley County water rights. Those funds were put back for water rights. So there's a little over 12 million, about 12.3 million in that account cash to help pay for this purchase. So that was foresight of those councils, understanding that trading water rights for water rights, and by the way, we're getting better water rights, so that's a positive. But the remainder of that is that at less than a 2% rate increase, we can fund the debt on the rest of that. And Laura's team, working with the bond council and the finance people, we are able to put that into the budget, and you will approve that as you approve this item and approve budgets for us to move forward with the debt issuance to fund the remaining approximately 17, 18 million, whatever the final survey comes out. So, thank you. Any other questions?
No questions, just say thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to recognize prior council under Mayor Hartman's leadership that made that decision, knew that water is vital to being a healthy, vibrant city, and it's an issue where we live. So they, I think, put a lot of thought into setting that aside. It took a lot of patience on their part and a vote of confidence to the people that were going to be sitting in these chairs down the road. They didn't even know who that was. So we talk a lot about these chairs are meant to look 20 and 30 years, sometimes 50 and 60 years into the future as we make decisions, and I think that was a great example of that council doing just that. So because of their leadership and their foresight today, we can say yes to this opportunity as it presents itself. Okay, Council, at this time, do we have a need to answer any questions that we should step into exec to discuss?
No, ma'am, not for me.
Okay. Do we have a motion then with regard to item three I?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Mayor, I move to approve a contract to purchase up to 15,768 acres of groundwater rights in Roberts County at a cost of $1,875 per acre with a total cost of up to 29,565,000 plus closing and other related costs, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
It's been moved by the Mayor Protem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the purchase of groundwater rights with regard to item three I on our agenda. Any discussion, questions about that motion?
So just to amend the amount, 29,565,000?
Yes.
In that motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. That is correct, because I did say thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. Just at this time, I do want to recognize Travis and Kylie. Thank you both for being here today. And Travis, thank you for your vision. This is obviously one piece of an even bigger deal, so we think that fits right in the Panhandle's spirit. People with big ideas willing to take some risk, and we appreciate that you invited us to be a part of your deal. I think it'll be beneficial for generations to come. We certainly hope that it's beneficial for your generations to come as well, but we appreciate both of you being here today. Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a four oh vote. Okay, at this time, we're going to recess, take a break, step in and do a press conference on this item, and then we'll come back and work through the rest of the agenda. The press conference is in Room 306, right up here on the same floor. If you want to join us, we would be happy for you to do that.
Okay, I'll call us back into order. Thank you for letting us take a break to mark that. It's historic and we wanted to make sure citizens had access to getting questions answered through a media event. So we'll go back on to our agenda and since we're kind of starting over, Dr. Sauer, we went past the beautification and public arts advisory board update and Parks and Rec advisory board update. Do you mind if we go back and pick those up now?
I don't, especially since I again have the best presentation ever, especially in the beautification of public arts. So.
Brag, brag, brag.
You know, now then I know why the mayor so enjoyed having Cat work for her. I mean, she's outstanding, outstanding. So do we have the, is there PowerPoint for that?
I'll pull it in.
It's coming.
Okay. So it's kind, actually the beautification in arts is going to be kind of simple because really pretty much it's about, this time we're just going to talk about murals and what's happened. And I think it's interesting that we're starting with the Texas Runs on Water Foundation and the Panhandle Groundwater mural donation. It was presented on the 14th of July. And you know, I think what we just, what we just witnessed was if, if we would ever call something about water conservation, that's huge water conservation. Whenever we have water that will be allocated for cities' use, I think it's, it's going to be really, really important. And especially when it's in an area that's really not, it's more ranch than it is farmed and to be able to take advantage of that. But anyway, out of that, we have a mural that was done. And these, right here is a picture of Blank Spaces. And Blank Spaces, I don't know if you all have been watching very much, but you need to go take a look at what has transpired with Blank Spaces. Sean Kennedy and Shanda O'Neal, they have done a great job with these high school kids, maybe I shouldn't call them kids, these high school.
Artists.
These high school artists. And this may be one of my, it may be my very favorite mural. And I want you to be able to take a good peek at this mural. It's at Athan Johnson. And it's going to be there for a long time to come. And so if you're, when City Hall is completed and you leave City Hall, you're not going to be able to miss this mural. It's always going to be front and center. And it should be front and center. It is an outstanding gorgeous mural. And it's that whole side of the building at Athan Johnson. And so I, it's, I am very grateful that, that that was basically donated to us. And we had a building that was perfectly suited for it. And now then it just helps us further to help conserve water and get the, the whole message out about what our groundwater district is doing and how we're taking care of water. And so that's, that was donated and that was done. The other thing that really occurred is we have three more murals were completed and we're ready for reimbursement. Let's see. Arts in the Sunset at 3701 Plains, Malcolm Byers has done that one. And it's an outstanding, and so you, if you're listening to this or watching this, you, you need to find these addresses and just go take an afternoon to take a look at the quality of art that we actually have in Amarillo. And that's probably one of the favorite things is just to watch how that's actually developed over the past four or five years. And, and then who do mural coming in and basically exploding the whole deal. So there, there's been a lot that has happened. Then the El Vicaro at 2200 Southeast 3rd, that's another Blank Spaces. And isn't that outstanding?
It is.
I think they're up to 36 murals in our city now.
Wow, 36?
Just Blank Spaces alone.
And then we go to the one that was just finished at Barnes Jewelry. So if you're coming down I-40 and you're out by the mall, you cannot miss it. And it's, it's another outstanding piece of art. And so those are the things that have happened at this, at this point in time. There are three more in the works to complete this year. One will be at Emerald Little Theater, another one at the Roseberry, and then the last one at Color Art. And then to finish it up, this project moving forward with approval was a, is a mock-up of what can be happening with some of the Transformers. XL Energy has, gave us this opportunity. So this is out in the parking lot to the north of Emerald Globe New Center. And you take a relatively ugly structure and you turn it into art, that is a really, really, really great thing to happen. So these are some of the things that are, have been happening thankfully to the Beautification and Arts Committee have actually helped get that established. It's, it's really great to see what has developed from there. So that's the beautification and arts.
Thank you. Questions about beautification arts, Parks and Rec? Dr. Sauer?
Okay, so Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec met last Wednesday. And the quick update on what was actually discussed there, aquatic update, the four pools by the city are open and fully operational. And we need to understand that City of Amarillo has done a great job with that. And Parks and Rec Department has done a great job with that because there, if you start looking around the state of Texas, you're going to find that there are a lot of cities that are either open with a lower capacity or have shorter hours because they've got staffing deficiencies. And we've been able to stay pretty full staffed. The parks have been able to keep those pools open the entire time. And I think it's, it's a great, it's a great thing to be, to say about how hard our Parks and Rec staff have been working to get this done. I'm thrilled with what Michael Kishiba has been able to do. Also in that vein, the seasonal closing date is confirmed to be August the 7th. And so that'll be the last day of the season for the pools. And I think school starts pretty quick right after that rain, if I remember correctly. There was a Martin Road Complex update. So what's happened at that point is, you know, there's a lot that's going on there. They're developing a fishing amenity and several other things. But what is, where we're at at this point is the new entry and the parking lot have been completed. And they're addressing some other issues, but they are continuing to make things go forward and progress. Probably one of the biggest things that is also happening in Parks and Rec is all of the playgrounds. And so here's the playground update. On Monday, July the 11th, two ribbon cutting ceremonies, one at Mary Hazel Rig and one at Sam Bourne. That means both of those parks are complete. And then there were five groundbreaking ceremonies held at Southeast Park, Glenwood Park, Stephen F. Austin, Heinz Memorial, and Pleasant Valley. So if you were to plot that out on a map, you'd find out that that touches just about every part of our city. So it's, it's really great to see that we were able to take some of the COVID funds and be able to help rehabilitate. That's one of the things that I would tell you is probably came to the top of the list of things was when people are getting back out and they're going to the parks again. So we need to be doing the things that give that opportunity for families to be able to enjoy the parks. And so things are moving along very well. On the athletic lighting update, the bid process is already into the evaluation phase. So the next phase for whoever would want to know this will be the actual selection of the approved vendor. And once that's happened, then we get to start work on getting the lights replaced and getting the parks back up to be able to use them, you know, pretty much at all, all times. And pretty much that's everything that I had.
Questions?
So, Dr. Sauer, in regards to the Martin Lake Road project, are we into phase two or three of the, of the project? And you may not know that, that may be for, that might be for Kyle or, and I don't even see Kyle here.
I don't see anybody. I, I know they're getting pretty far along. I would think it would be pretty, if not in phase three, it's pretty deep into two.
Yeah. Okay, I was just, I was just more interested in what the completion date might be for that project, but yeah, but that's okay. It's good.
Floyd might have that off the top of his head. Floyd, do you have the completion, estimated completion date for Martin Road? Okay.
We can get that information for you.
I don't, I don't need it anytime soon. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sauer. Great report and exciting things that are happening all across the city and, in our parks. Let's move on to, on the agenda, item 3F, which is a discussion and possible consideration of a job training facilities agreement between Emerald Economic Development Corporation and Emerald College. Mr. City Manager.
All right, Mayor, thank you. We've got Kevin Carter, President, CEO of Emerald Economic Development Corporation. Bring it to us.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me up here again. Good to see Councilmember Sauer. I want to take a little bit of time, if you'll give me a little liberty, to kind of talk about the history of Emerald Economic Development Corporation and educational, the institutions of higher learning in our community and how we've helped in the past. And then talk about this agreement, if that's okay, Mayor.
That'd be great.
Over the 30 years that AEDC has been in existence, we have given several times to the three institutions of higher learning and also the, the independent school districts that we're going to talk about in the next item. But over the last several years, one of the, the biggest bargains that we ever got was AEDC gave $6 million to build the Tech Pharmacy School. What a bargain that was to build that building for $6 million. It certainly would be hard to get a fifth of a building right now for $6 million. But that's been a, a huge plus to our economy, having that main pharmacy school of Texas Tech. Also, three years ago, we did the Tech Vet School for $69 million. That's, we're still starting to see and reap the rewards from that investment.
Well, I will say it's a $76 million annual economic impact into our community.
I think it's going to be larger than that, but right now, 76 million, yeah, it's huge.
Per year, every year.
With, with West Texas A&amp;M, we helped build or helped get the downtown center. And that was housed in the tower, the First Bank Southwest Tower for the first few years of their existence. We paid the rent the whole time that they were in that building. And then also, we did $3 million to help with Harrington Hall. That's the new downtown center for WT and downtown Amarillo. So. And then over the years, we've given quite a bit of money to Emerald College as well. One of those things that we do with Emerald College, and I do want to say kudos to Laura Storrs and Chris Sharp, and I met last summer, there was quite a few items that, that Emerald College had outstanding with workforce grants that we had done for training with Emerald College. There was about six or seven of those. And so we cleaned those up. Emerald College released those funds back to AEDC so they weren't committed. Those about a little under $500,000 that they released back to AEDC with the caveat that we would help with, in the future with the Innovation Outpost. So just a little bit of history of how Emerald EDC has helped with the institutions of higher learning in our area. The item that I bring today for you is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on a job training facilities agreement between the AEDC and Emerald College. Emerald College is in the process of renovating the existing facility at 11th and Polk for the creation of a job training facility known as the Innovation Outpost. They also received an Economic Development Administration grant, grant for that building, but that building will, their main purpose is for the upskilling and career acceleration for primary employees. And that's one of the main missions of AEDC is to, for the job creation of primary employees and primary employers. And so the, the agreement would allow AEDC to contribute $600,000 over a five-year period for, for a total of $3 million to help Emerald College with that facility, with the understanding that they would use that facility for job training on primary employees. Our board, yesterday, the AEDC Board voted 4-0 on that item yesterday at the board meeting on 7/25, with the understanding, they added a caveat in there that we have a letter of understanding that outlines the curriculum that will be taught at the Innovation Outpost. So that letter is not part of the agreement yet, but it will become part of the agreement in the motion that the AEDC Board made yesterday. I would certainly answer any questions if I could on that. Also, in the audience today is Mark Wyatt. He's the Vice President at Emerald College and their legal counsel. So, thank you for being here, Mark.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Stanley?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I guess my main concern would be the curriculum, like in investing in this and not seeing job growth that goes to upskilling workers that are going directly towards things that AEDC is, is bringing here. towards things that AEDC is, is bringing here. So manufacturing, technology, things like that. So this is $600,000 paid out annually. Would your letter have any compliances in there, anything like that, as you move forward as the AEDC, if for some reason this facility wasn't used for upskilling those specific types of workers?
Yeah, it's part of the agreement. They, they have to report, just like any other project that we have. So they're going to report how many students they have, how many people are going to get certificates in that. So we will have a reporting mechanism. But in the letter of understanding, it's going to have the exact curriculum that we are going to require as part of that. A lot of it has to do with what we're doing with the Global Food Hub that we're really starting, just now starting to roll out. That will be a lot of the curriculum as far as food safety. We're going, Amarillo College is going to develop a food safety program to help with our local food processing, since that we seem to be a hub now for attracting food processing companies. So there, there's about two or three items in that Global Food Hub that they're going to, they're going to, Amarillo College is going to develop curriculum that will fit those food processors specifically for each food processing company that we bring in. So, you know, we've brought in two or three in, just in the last year and a half. And so.
So the skills there are very needed. Describe the renovation to me and like, what, what specifically is the $3 million going to? Can you speak to that in this building?
I'm gonna let Mark speak to that, if that's okay, Councilmember.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you very much. The renovation is, is quite extensive. That was the, the north part of that downtown campus, and it's pretty much been gutted. The beginning of it was done with the EDA, the first one and a half million dollar EDA grant. The, the facility will have a little bit of everything. It will have lab spaces, working spaces. There will be spaces for upstart businesses. And it's designed such that it is very flexible. So every time they come in with a new company with different needs, we can, like, immediately, in a matter of days, change the space around to be what it needs to be.
Okay. And, and can you give me the total? You said there was a million and a half of EDA. This is $3 million over, you know, so many years. But do you, do you have a grand total of what the total investment in that building is?
I think it's about 12 million at this point.
12 million. Okay. And then if I'm correct, Kevin, really, to the AEDC, there's about a $2.5 million additional investment here because you would go ahead and credit off the other half million dollars that's still owed?
That's correct.
Okay.
We committed those funds. And when, like I said, when Laura and Chris, and Chris is their CFO at Amarillo College, we met last year, he went ahead and released those funds back where those weren't committed. But that gave us a little, just a little bit under $500,000.
Okay.
Back.
I appreciate the answers. Thank you, sir.
Certainly. Thanks, Mark.
Other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So here's my comment to both Mark and to Kevin, and actually the others that are involved. Whenever it came on in 2017, all of these entities were basically islands. Didn't communicate, didn't do work together, didn't do anything that actually came together and, or even were kind of islands even with the city. And what I've seen is the leadership that has been created in each one of these organizations, that now then you have gone from being islands to being very synergistic. And you're helping each other out. And that helping each other out is creating opportunities in Amarillo. And to be able to, without even thinking twice, say, I know Amarillo College will step up and will, and will be able to build in what needs to be for these new businesses coming in. That makes me feel very confident. And it probably makes you feel very confident too, Kevin, and you and all of your team who's done such a great job, that you can go out and sell Amarillo to anybody and know that Amarillo College, AISD, Canyon Independent School District, they've all are going to have your back. And they're going to help create the, the technology or the teaching or the education or whatever is needed to be able to fulfill those jobs. And so it's just, it makes days like today easy. And so I, I appreciate what all of you guys have done and how you've come to work together and what it is actually doing to help promote and propel the city forward. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, it makes a big difference when everybody's on the same page, and we are right now, especially with the, with the independent school districts and what their CTE programs and then what Russell's done with his leadership at Amarillo College and also with Dr. Windler and.
I don't want to leave out WT.
And all our, and all our Texas Tech. I mean, we just, everybody's on the same page as to what, how they want to make Amarillo grow and be better. So.
And I appreciate all the commercials and the communications, too, that you're trying to raise the level of awareness so our community knows what's happening at Amarillo College. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it is important to have a long-term view. And Mark, very much appreciate the partnership that Amarillo College, I mean, I love the billboard that so goes Amarillo College, so goes Amarillo. And I believe that's true. So if you would please pass on our appreciation to Dr. Lowry Hart, his leadership there, everyone on staff, of course, your Board of Directors who sees the vision for projects like Innovation Outpost. And I really do appreciate the AEDC's willingness to support this project because it has such a long-term impact here. We, I don't think we can fully even understand what the 10 and 20 and 30-year impact of this project will be. And for our workforce, we're, we're developing a workforce for an industry that is still in its infancy as far as the food hub. And that's very exciting for our economy 20 and 30 years from now, but it's taking a vision and stepping out on faith to do that now. So I appreciate all of the people that are involved behind that.
And I would love to give all of y'all a tour of that space. We can certainly get in there and, and you can see kind of the vision, especially the space that Mark was talking about that's flexible, that's just basically for this innovative food hub, the lab space there and how we can reconfigure that. It's, it's really cool. So if anybody would love to take a tour of that, we can certainly set that up with Amarillo College and Todd McLeese, the consultant that has sort of worked his way into being a, a full-time member of the Amarillo College staff. And he's doing amazing things and has an amazing background in, in innovation technology. And so that's going to make, that's made a big difference in this space as well.
Mark, what's the completion date for construction? I know that's always a hot topic, but.
Promise us anything. I actually don't know.
I think sometime early next year, I think, is the last.
First quarter '23.
Probably first quarter.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Spring.
Good.
Hopefully.
Okay.
Put me on the list. I want to go on the tour.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll, we'll work on that. If you don't mind coordinating it, maybe with the City Manager's Office, then Stephanie can help make sure we're noticed correctly to do that tour.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. With any other questions there, Council? Okay. Would you, do we have a motion with regard to the item then?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve an agreement between the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Amarillo College to renovate Amarillo College's existing facility at 11th Avenue and Pope Street for the creation of the Innovation Outpost, a job training facility for primary employees. Amarillo Economic Development Corporation will provide $3 million over, over five annual payments to help fund the facility.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this, Item 3F, which is an agreement between AEDC and Amarillo College. Questions? Conversation about that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3G is a discussion and possible consideration of a high-demand job training agreement between AEDC and Panhandle Regional Planning Commission and the Texas Workforce Commission. Mr. City Manager?
Well, it's more job training. And so Kevin's going to bring us that one too. Kevin?
Yeah, this ties in perfectly with today, just is all about job training. This is, we've done two of these so far. This is our third one in the last three years. This is an opportunity with the Texas Workforce Commission and local economic development organizations to put up funds. And Texas Workforce Commission matches that. So AEDC will put up $150,000 and have that matched by, with $150,000 from the Texas Workforce Commission for high-demand job training. PRPC helps us administer that. They write the grant. We pay them a nominal fee. I think it's usually around $5,000 or $6,000 for that grant fee to, to receive $300,000 for our community. So it's really a wonderful thing that we get to help the, the CTE programs in this. With this $300,000 worth of funds, we're going to help all five independent school districts in our area. That's AI, Amarillo ISD, Bushland ISD, Highland Park, Canyon, and River Road. They've, they've submitted items that they want to purchase from anywhere, from welding equipment to Amarillo ISD, I love what they're buying. They're actually buying two electric vehicles to assemble and to run. So I can't wait to see that. And it's just a great opportunity for all five independent school districts. I've, I've visited with a couple of the superintendents of the five school districts. We are going to try to have an event for, or start meeting regularly with all five ISD, their CTE coordinators, which is their, I just went blank, career and technical education folks, to try to make sure that we are in that, what Dr. Sauer was talking about with the synergy of those programs and just start meeting regularly with them just to see what their needs are and, and what the needs of employers are to make sure that we're training our kids in the school districts to what our employers are wanting. So I think there's going to be a lot of, I think our employers will enjoy the fact that we're trying to get those folks together with the five CTE departments in those school districts to try to upskill and to educate our workforce for the future. Certainly answer any questions if you have them.
Questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion with regard to Item 3G, Council?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve an agreement between the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation, the Panhandle Regional Planning Commission, and the Texas Workforce Commission to support high-demand job training. Amarillo Economic Development Corporation will provide $150,000 to match funding from the Texas Workforce Commission to be used by all five area independent school districts for their career and technical education departments. The agreement to be administered through the Panhandle Regional Planning Commission on behalf of the Texas Workforce Commission, Workforce Solutions of the Panhandle and Amarillo Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve Item 3G, an agreement between AEDC, Panhandle Regional Planning Commission, and the Texas Workforce Commission. Conversation, discussion, questions about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. The last item on our action agenda is actually related to a lawsuit that's been ongoing for many years. I think it would be prudent for us just to dismiss into executive session so that you could get an update about, because it is a legal matter and there are confidential things involved, get an update on this, Item H. And then I think while we're in exec, we'll just do our exec agenda. And if we want to take action on Item 3H, then we'll come back out of executive session and do that. Are we good to do that, Mr. City Attorney?
Absolutely.
Okay. If you don't mind reading our dismissal language, please.
Not at all. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session of the Amarillo City Council was announced on July 26, 2022, at 3:01 PM under the following authority. Section 551.071, Consultant Attorney About Pending or Content Delayed Decision or Settlement of the Same. Section 551.072, Discuss Purchase, Exchange, Sell, Lease, or Value Real Property in Public Discussion. Such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Section 551.087, Discuss Commercial Financial Information Received from Existing Business or Business Prospect, In Which the City Is Negotiating for the Location of a Retention of a Facility, or For Incentives the City Is Willing to Extend, or Financial Information Submitted by the Same. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned to executive session.
Okay, we're good. So do we have a motion, counsel, with regard to that -- call the number out for us.
Three I.
Three I?
Yes.
Sorry, three H.
It's three H, Mayor.
Three H, thank you for that item, three H.
Yes, ma'am. And yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve a settlement agreement related to the case styled as City of Amarillo, Texas versus Brought Engineers Group Limited, L.A. Fuller and Sons Construction Limited, and Mission Clay Products LLC. Cause number 106315-E-C-V pending in the 108th Judicial District Court of Potter County, Texas in the amount of $11.1 million and authorize the city manager to execute such an agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor for ten seconds and by council member Sauer. I just want to confirm, since we were out in executive session and called back in city secretary, do we have everything functioning camera-wise and all of that? We're good.
We do, Mayor.
Okay. So any comments or questions about that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a five-o vote. And with that, we're at the end of our agenda and we will adjourn for the day. Thank you.